This meeting will be held both in person and virtual. The session is being both video and audio recorded. Board members and staff who are joining virtually will remain on mute except when speaking or voting, and will generally be keeping video of themselves out throughout the meeting. If a member of the public joining virtually creates an audio or video disruption or in public or publicly, they will be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff or the first selection. Public input should vary 24 hours ahead of time to publicinput@columbiact.org. And if you are attending virtually, public comments during the meeting can be submitted through the chat feature where you can wave your hand and request that your mic be unmuted. Please include in both methods the name and address. I ask you all now to write a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Five more chairs in the North House. Okay, next is the approval of the agenda as it has been published.
I move to approve the agenda.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we know if Rob? I guess it hurts. Okay, thank you. All right, approval of the minutes. I make a motion, we approve the minutes for the board of select and regular meeting from October 19th of the year 2021. That seems pretty precise. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Audience and senators. Anything? Anybody want to say something not on the agenda? Somebody in the chat? No, so. Okay. Next is old business, not seeing any new business. Approval of the board of select then scheduled for the year 2022. I move to approve the 2022 board of select schedule as presented. I looked at it, there could be flaws, I didn't see any. The only thing I was thinking about, July 5th, we usually bump that a week, so it's not smack after July 4th, but that's up to the board, obviously. And what about November 1st? Is that the first Tuesday we vote?
Yes.
Yes.
So what are we going to do with that? So you're saying you don't want to leave the date before you vote? No, we vote on Tuesday, we meet on Tuesday. I'm not voting. You're saying the first is a Tuesday?
The first two.
It would be if it's here.
So you want to do the 8th and the 15th? Yeah.
Yeah. Right. So I need to amend my motion. And what about July 5th? Do you want to bump that a week or leave it? I do, and we'll take, I'll take a look at the agenda and we'll always take a look at if we need it that close to either the 12th or the 19th. But right now, okay, I make a motion, we approve the board of select and 2022 meeting schedule with the following revisions. July 12th, nice the 5th, in November would be the 8th, nice the 1st. All the rest are as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Who was the 2022 holiday schedule? I move to approve the 2022 holiday schedule as presented. There's jobs here. You'll see, because we published next year's, this year's New Year's, but next year's New Year's Day, it seems like they got an extra, but that's just for now, let me make sure it's there. I will tell you, I think in the holiday schedule, there will be some questions that come up in the future. We'll talk about it when they come up, but there may be some changes. So, but right now, motions there, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Youth services discussion. I'm going to turn this over to Bill O'Brien. He came to me, would like to discuss it and kind of open it up to the board for thoughts.
Yeah, tomorrow, our youth services committee is meeting at 5:30 here, and they're also meeting via Zoom. We wanted to address a couple of issues on the agenda. You have the purpose, objectives, and responsibilities of the youth services committee, and then also broadening community awareness of services offered by AHM and HEBRAN, and engaging Columbia businesses and citizens in AHM fundraising efforts. The last two issues were raised at the last youth services committee meeting where the members felt that it was important to support AHM. We're very happy with the work that they're doing over there, and in town here, it's very appropriate.
Sorry, we're music services on the outside.
One of the issues that's come up is, you know, the purpose of the youth services committee. The youth services committee was formed about 10 years ago by the board of selectmen, and the purpose at the time was to explore youth services, which was done. Ultimately, we ended up with going with AHM, and again, we're very happy with the good work that they're doing. But the issue comes up in terms of whether or not the youth services committee is duplicative of what AHM is doing. And one of the concerns that I have, you know, tomorrow is my last meeting as chairman, but I'm concerned about the human resources that we have available on the committee. You have a lot of people with really vast experience in terms of, you know, social workers. You have people in different areas of expertise that I would hate to squander those resources if there was a change in the youth services committee. So I think it's very important that we find a new purpose for the objectives for the youth services committee, but I am concerned about the fact that some of our efforts are duplicating what AHM is doing here. Perhaps Mark wants a comment on that?
Yeah, I had a talk with the superintendent today about this exact issue, and she felt that you have a lot of talent now with Katie as our social worker, Bernadette is our senior center director, and then her team, including Barbara Wilson as the director of student services, Karen Kudrow as a social worker and assistant principal, and Sherry as AHM. What she suggested was heading up this exec group to actually do a needs assessment survey of the town to really see what our true needs are, and then try to decide how best to channel resources through AHM or through our own employees to solve those needs.
Yep, so, Mark and I talked about it this afternoon a bit, and, you know, one of the points that Mark raised was have the professionals handle it, but I agree to a certain extent, but I also would like to have the citizens and the members of the youth services committee participate in any kind of special, because a lot of them have a lot more knowledge and experience than I have in a lot of those areas. And I really think that, again, I don't want to squander these human resources.
I want AHM to weigh in, help us to accomplish what we're trying to do.
And that's the purpose of tomorrow's meeting. I've invited several people, I've invited people from the school, I've invited the board here. I've invited people from AHM to participate, so hopefully we can.
Did you shut?
I did, I did.
Zoom up. So actually, over the years, because we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, over the years, and even currently with Columbia adding a social worker in town, with AHM having one at the school plus other services there, and Bernadette and her group over there, we really do cover a lot of, I hope nothing slides through the cracks. I haven't heard of anything. I think we are really probably meeting the needs, hopefully even more, you know, meeting the needs of the people in the town. But that's, and I understand what you're saying about the expertise of the people that are currently on the youth services, not to say, "Thank you very much, we don't need your services," because we absolutely do. Many societies, you know, they take the wisdom of the elderly and try to help those that are young who make mistakes or are on a path that, you know, we're not quite sure about. So that's the expertise that you're talking about. I mean, so I think it's wise that we get AHM together and/or with your, with the youth services and figure out what they want to do. I'd love to hear their input on all this, but hopefully that'll take place tomorrow at 5:30 here.
So this is like to make an assessment of what we're doing now, and if we need to make adjustments or changes?
Issues have come up from, you know, I've heard from various sources saying that AHM is a youth services board, technically, and their Columbia is youth services board, so whether or not having a youth services committee is duplicative of that. You know, whether we're doing the same thing. I mean, we've hosted some presentations in the past on various issues, you know, drugs and vaping and, you know, computer safety and things like that, you know, it's been, it's been good, but, you know, the question is, do we need to change the focus of the committee? I'd like to maintain the committee if we could, but find a new focus for them rather than duplicating efforts that are already out there.
Okay, well, I think we look forward to what comes out tomorrow night and, you know, moving forward. Thank you. Okay, we get this every year. I move to adopt the homeland security grant program as presented. Is any difference in last year, Mark? You'll see.
Could you explain what that is? I think I asked.
Yeah, it's a $10,000 performance grant. $5,000 is federal funding, and $5,000 is a matching, a grantee match. We use it to buy supplies and to fund our emergency manager director with a small stipend for winning that trust. Jerry James.
I mean, it's in here if you want to go through it, but anything for security. Especially if they give it to us. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll sign that. Opposed? Thank you. Who's the scoreboard? Well. So we've done a lot of good, some good things up at Wreck Park, and somebody, one of our citizens who's been involved in the town a lot, has asked to be able to donate to the major baseball field where the day group kids, kids that are over the age of 13 from high school play. And so I moved to approve the scoreboard donated by Scott Dunick to be replaced at the majors' baseball field at Wreck Park. With a little, another donation, we could probably call it, you know, Dunick Park. You know, I know that Anne is here, she's always here, always weighing in on the welfare of the town ecologically, all right? With open space and different things. But if you see in the Little League field, it's already been, it's a Dunick name on that scoreboard there. And I always used to look at it and go, "Oh, bless them, you know, they did that," because they were involved. And now the Westers have the girls softball field.
And that's Scott's best friend.
And Scott stepped up and said, "You know what? For the youth and tie it in, we could like his name up there." So I, for one, am very happy to see that. I saw the mock-up of it, I thought, "That's Scott Dunick, boy, that's a big old name on there." So the motion is there. Anybody else? Any discussion?
No.
Well, I think it's wonderful. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Dedication of the annual report. Here it is, that time of year. And I gotta tell you, I have, in the last three, four years, I've been involved in this, really, and have been able to present a copy of the annual report to the person that we've dedicated it to, to a person. They've been like overwhelmed almost, you know? Dean Topper, Lou Scotti, and Gary Littlefield and his family, his passing, but it's just, there's a few things that I'm able to do in town that actually feel really good, and this is one of them. There's a lot of things that feel okay, but these are the ones that feel really good. So I like to, I like to think about it. I put forward a name. I asked Mark to check to see if this person had ever gotten it before, and, but I don't, you know, I hate to throw the name out there and have it on the meeting and stuff like that, and then, you know, have others say somebody else.
Do you want other members to bring him to my office? And then, yeah, I'll lay him all out at the next meeting, you can pick one?
Yeah, if you would, but, I mean, the, this, the list of people who have gotten this and that have done remarkable things for the town of Columbia. You know, it's a very tough choice every year, because there's so many, so many people that are deserving. All right.
Nothing on the lake. The lake is down two feet, three inches. It's on track to be down six feet in another 11 minutes. And we're on track to do the pier, starting that rehab in 14 days.
Okay, and we're okay with any other work that was approved, right?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, appointments and resignations. Who slipped this one in here?
Oh, my goodness. That town story?
Yeah, I slipped that on there. Hey, listen, I, this is, this is, I know, it's always a pleasure when Ingrid says, "I want to tell you something," because it's something about the town of Columbia. And I love history.
Me too.
And when she brings something to me, it's like, I'll tell you, it's five minutes or it's a half hour, but all of a sudden you go, "Huh, wow, this is a long time," but it's been like this, because it's so wonderful, you know, just unbelievable stuff. So it's my pleasure to make a motion to approve the appointment of Ingrid Wood to continue as town historian.
I gotta say, I think we're really lucky to have you as a member of our community, because I don't know, everybody has somebody who's so definitely. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Honestly, Ingrid, I mean every word. I enjoy hearing your stories and just because it's there. It's our, it's our town, and I'm pretty proud of it, even its history.
It's a wonderful town. You put a lot of work into getting gathering, a lot of information when people ask. We can support. Thank you.
And I'm happy to say that we have, I make a motion to approve it. Town administrator's recommendation to appoint President Ben Archen as the highway maintainer. He came in and interviewed for the position. Beth and Mark and I, we kind of sat down with him, and he brings a wealth of experience, and, you know, he'll hit the ground running.
Pretty impressive.
He'll hit the ground running. What we don't need to do is to worry about any, you know, storm coming up and wondering if he could work any piece of it.
And he lives in town, right?
Yes. Yeah. So, that's an added thing.
Previous fireman and a current TNT.
Like I said, it was impressive, right?
Yeah, so, motion is there. Any questions or discussion?
If Beth's online, if you haven't, I'll ask her.
Where did he work previously?
Tilkhan. He was the foreman in charge of all their major construction projects. So he's got a real good construction background, and he's been involved in construction his whole career and ambulance and fire.
And one of the things when he came in and, you know, tell me why. He said, "You know what? I live in town, it's a good town. I have, I have a large family. I attend school here, and I can be part of the town and continue to make it better." That's what I'm looking for.
Plus, he said his values of change, his values of being home with the kids and not feel far away every night. Me and Jane always project, so it's good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Beth, you got them.
Thank you.
Town administrators report.
So, first of all, just wanted to thank Ingrid and Jen and Stephen for all their ideas and pull together a Veterans Day celebration honoring those who serve. And that will be Thursday at 11:00 a.m. on the green weather permitting, it should be okay. And Friday's the rain day. So we'll meet there and we'll be.
Wait, 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 there's no rain.
No, no, I mean, Friday's going to be raining, so Thursday. You sound like you're ready. No rain. If it's raining, we're in the open sun.
Correct.
And we'll have the voice cuts involved. A team actor will be our speaker, and Stephen will be involved. And then we're going to go to the senior center noon for a luncheon hosted on by Maureen Allen. Tim is going to speak there as well. Anything else, Stephen?
Not for that.
Okay. Also, we've been working with Lions, and they would like to do their annual holiday gazebo lighting in Carol Singh on Town Green Sunday, November 28th at 5:00 p.m. And the key this year is it fits me to bring flashlights to light the way for Sam. So that sounds something fun.
Carol Singh went by Rick Cooper, that's Alice's brother. Could be scary Sam.
Yes, oh, yes. It's not actually a dedication ceremony, it's groundbreaking, thank you. So we're, we'd like to do a groundbreaking, because this is such an important addition to Wreck Park that we've agreed to complete. And with the pavilions, concessions, and getting that bathroom, store facility, all in one really great building. Steven was thinking of having a shovel in the ground, groundbreaking. I mean, we could get a photo op, but we're thinking possibly sometime this Friday as a, as a date to draw on. I don't know if that works with anybody's schedules, maybe morning or like before. I don't know, what time? If we did it Friday, is there a time that would work for anybody?
You don't have any equipment up there yet?
Well, today and tomorrow, there's.
Friday's going to rain.
Friday might be a rainy day, right? But.
How about the following Friday?
No, I'm not around. My daughter's getting anxiety down.
Ooh, it'll be a little bit.
I'm thinking I'd like to have some sort of bulldozer up there, put Judy at the wheel, and the other four of us will be running in front of her. Like, you know, Abbey Road type of thing, run like to get.
I don't run, I go up. My knees don't run. I can see myself.
On Fridays, I think the rain is in the afternoon at late, isn't it? Let's check on it, but, I mean, I wanted, too bad Beth's not here, I'd like to know if they have any equipment.
Well, their equipment, they should be done, they worked on today, and tomorrow they should be out by five. But you could always have them put a piece of equipment up there if you wanted a photo op.
They worked on their equipment to have it ready, or they?
No, they're cutting out the hole in the parking lot where the foundation would be put in.
Okay.
So they're just getting the asphalt out these next two days.
So it'd be easy to work the shovel, right?
Yes, you'll, you'll have dirt instead of asphalt for your groundbreaking.
Well, we can look at Friday.
How about early, like nine?
That's early?
Nine o'clock is fine.
Friday is 100% chance of rain, but I don't know when it starts.
I don't know, Friday.
Monday, we have a meeting, was that?
Yeah, it's raining, it's raining like all morning. I've got the alarm up, and it's just from 7:00 a.m., 5:00 a.m. on, it's kind of raining.
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday, next Tuesday?
No day's better than.
Tuesday?
We'll phone something on email, if everybody can be there, whoever could be there will pick a day, okay?
Yeah, I know, it's hard to plan for people.
Okay, just try to make sure over the corner, see if we can get a photo op.
Do you have my email address?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Great.
I saw our pavilion, by the way. I drove through Ellington today, and it's right there at their field.
Exactly what we're.
It's basically what, you know, I mean, yeah, looks good. Thank you. Correspondence there, a lot of correspondence, getting a lot of press. Everybody doesn't know this, it's Connor from the Chronicle, and he gave you your number, he'll call you all night, hours of the night, there's no problem there. If he wants a story, he's going to get it. Called me, my wife, I went to bed about 10:58, election eve. My wife goes, "Your phone's ringing downstairs." Only people who call me at that hour is my kids. So I jumped out of bed, ran downstairs, it's Connor. How'd the election go? But it's okay, I'm good in the morning, though, 4:00, I'm good. 11:00 at night, 9:00.
We had some wacky dinner once.
I know, I get it, believe I, I, I get it. And when he says he's going to get in touch with me, he's going to call.
Thank Jen for, again, the monthly newsletter.
Yep, it's always nice to see. All right, a lot of stuff in there.
And note two in the police report, you know, nine accidents. We're averaging like two a week.
That's terrible.
Columbia, that's not good.
No transfers, but we do have some refunds. I mean, I move to approve the refunds, total of $13,448.95.
A lot of them were.
I got a question for you. This one's, how can it be $13,000 when the amount of $17,000 on the first?
Oh, wait. But, was that a typo?
Looks more like $30,000.
Oh, that should be.
Just seven, eight, nine.
It should be $1,746.
Thirty-two. Thirty-eight?
Well.
There's nothing that's $17,000. Oh, wait, no, there's $17,000.
Okay, do we have to kind of check for Martin Guy for nothing?
Fifty-two, thirty-two.
For Martin Guy?
Yeah. So if you look at the individual sheet, it says it. And then you've got the second sheet with all the 12,000 CoreLogic, for $10,049.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so the original amount was 19,209, and then it was corrected to 17,463. So the difference that was adjusted was 17,46. Right.
All right, so I need to amend this. Again, I'm not going to go by this, because the total is different on the back side. It's 10,149.66.
So you have two, you have two, she had to do the second one. She, this is the total, those all went to CoreLogic, 10,149.66.
So of the 13, 10,000 went to CoreLogic?
Correct.
Right, so there's 3,299 on the first page and 10,000.
10,149 on the second page.
On the second page.
So they totaled the 13, 148.95. It's just weird the way it's displayed here.
I can double check.
I'm going to check it.
What Carol would ask.
I'm just going to add them together, make sure I have them. All right, motions on the floor for thirteen, four forty-eight, ninety-five cents. Based on the list provided by the tax office. All those in favor? I oppose. Who's paying the bills? Bills total is two hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and two cents. Consisting of twenty-one, twenty-two emergency, twenty-one, twenty-two regular credit card and paycheck.
The youth services, we paid our contract.
Right, that's our annual.
And we bought a mower.
Yes, a roadside mower with a big.
We want something for a hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Was that in the budget?
Yes.
Curiosity, so that was in the capital?
A boom mower, it was a hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Yeah, it's a it's a pretty exact piece of equipment. It's all automated with hydraulics and big giant mower arms. Yeah.
Oh, a big tractor at this point, it holds for seven grand.
Okay.
And it has a leaf blower on the back.
Any discussion, any more discussion? All those in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Audience of citizens.
I'm just.
Say your name.
Anne Dunnick, one of three. I I just wanna point out that if you schedule the groundbreaking for Friday, I don't think Mark Volzsa can attend.
We could ask him, he's right there. That's true. Hey, Mark?
I can, I can make a special trip.
Thank you, we'll let you know.
Could be kind of fun if they get in the morning.
So back again, uh board member comment, any, excuse me, anything in the chat?
No, sir.
Okay, no hands, great. Board member comments?
Just a question. What 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 are we doing in town here as far as the mask mandate?
Well, I was going to address first of all, the only place we wear is uh the town buildings. Everywhere else, there is no mask mandate. So I was gonna ask Mark to kind of take the pulse of the employees, how they feel. You know, my thought is, I'd like to make sure that they feel fine, they feel okay, they're at ease with people coming in without a mask on. Really, to wear a mask, I don't like it, but to wear it for uh the public to come in for five minutes out of respect to somebody's concern. We're gonna take a little questionnaire on that, but it's the only place we ask people to wear it, it's a public building, so uh Mark and I will discuss that tomorrow. What are your thoughts?
I'm just just asking.
Throwing a worry of it.
I, we all are.
I know.
The kids stay aware.
Uh I would, the when I walk into an office and there's nobody in there except for one or two people working there, they're more than six, eight, ten feet apart, I will tell you that they have a lax mask. You know, they don't wear the mask all the time. When someone comes in, they do put their masks on, but uh I'll discuss it with Mark, we'll make a decision.
There hasn't been any cases at the town hall.
We have more at the school. Here we are, one here, one there. When 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 does the board change?
It'll be the first meeting in September.
Okay.
So then the second meeting in November, it will still be this board. It it changes officially on the twenty-second, I believe, of November.
That's what it depends on.
Is that, will will we have one more board? Uh who's the next one?
Uh twenty-first, isn't it?
Something next week.
Yeah, it's the sixteen.
This is sixteen.
Next week, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, all right. They sent out an email about that too. We're gonna have it, because I wanna. All right, anybody else? Board member comments? Okay, hearing none. Um I call, I I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
What's that? Executive session.
Can we have one?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. I don't know what it's about, so who are we gonna wanna?
We we talked about, we probably should have it, did by Chris to stay.
Okay.
Okay.
So at this time, it's this time we'll suspend the board's selectmen meeting, we'll enter into executive session and we would ask Chris Len to stay.
And do you need anyone else? You want me to stay?
Yeah, yes.
And how about Jen?
Sure.
Okay.
We have the administrator.
Thank you very much.
It's kind of lovely. Thank you. Thank you for doing this again.
Connor, do you need to ask a question, anybody here?
Uh, just Anne.
Great.
Yeah, so uh is Scott your husband?
Does he know you're writing that check?